Probably older than Tom for you.
I've got it in my.
It was older.
Everything is on this.
As we like it.
This is Woody. This is their agenda. This, you know that clipboard thing I have? I asked the guys not to make a mess of the box, so it's in order, I think.
Thank you.
Oh. Where's your packets?
Over.
It's all good for me.
Oh.
You didn't grab one?
I probably didn't grab one.
I think I did. Let me go get it.
Go on.
Are we like it, sir? Don, are we like it?
It's rolling.
It's rolling, Jim. We haven't started.
It will come up pretty quick. Yours is very, it's gonna take a while.
Okay, good.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order in about one minute.
You can call it to order.
No, because I forgot my packet.
It's okay.
I didn't see it up there. I think Mike has it.
I may have it, because Lee may have given me both of them.
I didn't see anything in front of me that I could grab, so. You sure you didn't put it in your...
I didn't. Nothing goes in there anymore.
He just brings that little clip.
Except we're going for it. We have a briefcase, you know?
I don't have it. Is that it right there? You have yours, Rachel? Is it right there?
Now, that's actually just the, they, they were for Woody, but there's two in this packet, I'm sure.
That's how it's done, we're checking.
Because if Bob was looking at...
Because I didn't have anything in front of me yet, probably why I didn't think of grabbing it.
Everything else, I don't know, that's good. Okay, if you get... Yep, there you go. That's one packet.
Mike did it again.
No, I was handed the, I was handed those, Jim.
They should be in this. This is for Woody.
Look at that. I did it.
It really is your fault.
I know, yeah. All right.
Can't leave any papers around, but...
No. Seven oh one, one minute, and we're on time. All right, gentlemen, we have, uh, we have minutes...
Don, are you on, in records?
I'm rolling.
We have minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the May tenth meeting minutes as amended. And I'll second the motion.
And I'll just make a comment, well written. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You sign that. While those minutes have been signed, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, since we have a small audience. I'm gonna start with Chief. Okay, we have some stuff in the inbox for you, so thank you.
Do you need the time on that?
And Don, do you have any?
Just say thank you to everybody that pitched in for Dunbar and March on the Common. Broke sales for fifty-four thousand dollars over the weekend.
Wow.
And, uh, every, most of our vendors did at least a thousand dollars for that, and, uh...
Don, how'd that compare with last year's sales?
Oh, way up. I think we had, uh, in the high thirties last year.
Wow.
But we only had one day.
Okay.
For that, and Saturday with the weather and everything, uh, was a little down, but not bad. There's like seven thousand, eight thousand dollars difference between Saturday and Sunday. Between the two. But, uh, overall, uh, we had lots of people coming through, and I think it was a very, a lot of good, positive comments from vendors and attendees.
Great. Okay, um, we're all in public comment, and, um, transfer station supervisor is not here. All right, so I'm gonna do...
I did see him today, and it did sound like he was coming, so.
Okay.
We'll defer it till later in the meeting.
Yeah, that sounds fun. We can do that. Feasible, rather? Not fun. I'm gonna go right down to town business. I'm just gonna, um, I have a whole inbox here, which I'm not gonna go out of order yet, because Lee put it all in order for me. But I am gonna say, we had, um, just to, I would give the board an update, a courtesy update of the planning board, who we met last night. We just approved the subdivision on County Road. Basically, it's essentially a thirteen acre lot that was divided into two, two plots, and it was approved last night. And that was, and, uh, the planning board continues to work on their master plan. I'm glad to hear from them. The town, um, there was some controversy about the road. The, the town got a buffer so they can straighten the road out. Because it, there's a, there's a ledge that has to come out. They're gonna have to remove the ledge before the town accepts it.
Okay.
Okay, let's skip over that.
Say, do anything with the whip with the whip, Mike, or they keep me answered?
They're, they're, they're asking for, um, an easement on their property, so in the event they have to widen the road or, and push like snow and gravel and get access to it, the easement is being written into the deed.
Okay.
So the question is, they are widening it for, for the line of sight, for the driveway cuts, but there's a, there's a section of ledge that needs to be moved out of there. However, the, uh, in addition to that, they're asking for a ten-foot easement. And the ten-foot easement doesn't really affect them, because the thing is, if you look at their property, the two lots, swamp and it's all ledge. So they really can't do anything with it anyways. Okay, I'm gonna go through the inbox. I'm gonna continue that. I'm gonna skip over the transfer station material. And Chief gave us some photographs, just to let you know of the, of the, uh, of the bridge and, uh, of the bridge being implemented in action. Thank you, Chief, for the photographs.
Speaking of the bridge, I visited today, and I saw what the chief has pictures of. The footings are set on one side, and in talking with, uh, the people from Hanson, they're gonna set the footings on the opposite side next week, and they plan on setting the bridge the Tuesday after Memorial Day. It's happening very quickly.
Did you see the picture, Bob? Kinda cool looking.
He's getting ready to pull, he's getting ready to pull the steel on.
It's out.
Oh, it is out?
Yeah, I was down there again. They, they pulled the steel. Yeah, they were just in the process of cleaning it back there.
Oh, wow.
Uh, the second item, uh, the, uh, Chief had, uh, respond to a trespassing charge, and things are trespass, I would distill it very simply. Two residents, uh, were arguing over a piece of property, and each claiming they have ownership to the piece of property. And they, after an investigation by the Chief and discussion with the, uh, the attorney that supports the Chief, it's, it's essentially gonna be a civil matter to be taken up and then solved from there. And so, Chief did a good job with the read material, and, uh, I, I shared that information with the planning board last night, because some of the decisions years ago were not necessarily detailed. They weren't as detailed as they, they're still in more requests now. So, I think some of the stuff could have been done with, uh, a little more detail in there, in the surveys and et cetera, like that. All right, I would have a thing from, what? Chief, are you talking, I'm gonna let you talk to this one. This is about, uh, putting a no parking signs in, uh, on a side of the road. Yeah, it would be in that choke point of, uh, Robert Rogers Road, right across from Hodgman's house. There's a section over there where the, the, uh, the edge of the road very quickly becomes, um, woods over there. And it, it's a dangerous spot over there with the cars parked on both sides of the road. So at, at the very least, we can at least limit parking on one side of the road. Based upon the event, we may want to eliminate, uh, restrict parking on the other side as well. But I haven't thought of a reason, a good reason to have parking on that side of the road, you know, at any of these events we've been at, so I think it might be a good idea to just post that and have that part of itself. So in the future, we, um, you know, we can go from there.
I'm in agreement with the one side of the road and that section, Chief. Now, um, being that the Hodgmans had actually brought this to your attention, did they not want the signs on their side of the road for no parking, or how did that come about that they are gonna be on the other side of the road?
Eric was, um, he was upset after this, this weekend, you know, with parking on both sides of the road and people having to walk in the road.
Yeah.
So he really liked to see, based upon the event, no parking on either side. Parking on his side of the road, he, he didn't have a problem with, with, with cars being there or, uh, people using it. It was really the people having to walk in the roadway that, that caused them some, uh, some angst, so.
So you still feel it's better to put the no parking on that side of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't think of a good reason to park there.
Okay.
You know, given the flow of traffic and invisibility and the difficulty in getting out of the passenger side of the vehicle, and everybody has, it's always across the road there. Everybody has to cross the road to get to the, to get to the, where the events being held, regardless of what happens. So that's the, that's the better place to, to post.
So for now, we'll do one side of the road?
If we do that one side, then we can, we can deal with events, uh, my, my thought is to come up with a, with an event plan for, for some of these different events, uh, for parking, and this, and make that part of, part of the yearly, uh, you know, the, the yearly plan. So you wanna, not a year-round ban on parking on that side, just for the event? Just the one side. Oh, you're okay. A year-round ban on the one side, on the other side, we take it by event. For instance, if people were parking at the, um, and this is Eric Fogg's idea, it makes a lot of sense to me. If people were parking at the school to go to the Common, you'd, they need to have a place to walk, like for the Arts on the Common, Old Home Day, and for, uh, for Halloween. If, if it's town meeting and people are trying to get to the school, and they're on that side of the road and moving toward the school, and they're not back and forth all the time, you know, might not be a bad idea to park there. I estimated that, um, not parking on the, uh, the north side of the road, we lose about seven spots there.
Yeah, which is minimal.
You can fit about seven spots, but parking is always gonna be a big problem. You know, there's, there is no really excellent solution, so we gotta kinda make do with what we have, you know, making most of it. Well, comment?
Oh, I experienced that Saturday when I went, because they were parked on both sides. So it was very narrow to get through and for cars to drive by when people were walking. So, it would make sense.
Don, do you have a comment?
Saturday, we didn't have the signs posted. Sunday morning, Joe and I went out and we posted the signs on Robert Rogers, on the Common side of Robert Rogers, and that helped alleviate it. We allowed the vendors to load and unload, but get the cars out. And they were real good about going down to the, uh, uh, town garage and parking their cars there. We had the shuttle service running.
And this would be a full-time...
Does any coordination have to be accomplished with the road agent?
Uh, if, if, if the signs were approved, they would be the ones to place the signs.
Okay.
I gotta talk to him about it. It just came up, and I wanted to, I wanted to at least give it to you so you could think about it, so you think we're...
I don't think we need to make a decision right this minute. I think we'd defer a week or two.
Yeah.
And I, I would ask you just to talk to the road agent about it and get his input, make sure he has no concerns on this at all.
Okay.
Agreed?
Yeah. Have a good one.
Okay. All right, continuing on. Next subject. We have a request from the, uh, from Mary, librarian. She wants to put some, um, she's doing a, uh, library rock. It's, it's a kinda like a kids' event, and she wants to put some colored rocks out there. I have no issue with that at all.
I don't, I've already read the email and, uh...
Okay, we have a consensus there.
Sure.
So. She's done so much for the school of these, for, uh, making the library a focal point of, um, of the activities. Okay, Lee, you wanna talk to me about this? Emergency operations plan, we need signatures.
Annually, the Dunbar and Emergency Operations Plans, EOP, is, requires a signature page, be updated with all current town officials. And John Wigan through Joe Marie is working on making sure that we, um, get the forms completed in a timely manner. Uh, this also, um, informs the new town officials that there is an emergency plan available, and, uh, Joe Marie will inform them of where they are available. Typically, you can find one with the town clerk, town office, fire department, police department, and Dunbar Elementary School, so.
That's the big emergency plan that they worked out so we can feed my stuff down if we ever needed it. Just my signatures, I see it?
Uh, the other ones require...
There's another one here.
Yep.
Oh, good, I'm not alone, gentlemen. Those, those are just, uh, just me. Uh, I want you to sign these.
Okay.
Lee, will you fill in the date here?
Yeah.
Is it, is it when they dropped the date?
I'll have to worry for it.
Okay, well.
Is it witness? Is that what it says?
No, 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 just, just gotta fill in the date it was adopted. To date. That they're only one, huh?
Carbon copy is...
I, I don't think people understand what carbon copy is. Do you understand what carbon copy is?
Yes.
Okay. You should say no, I'm too young for that.
I'm gonna get my hands on it.
I know.
That's Michael.
Okay, Chief Bob again. Another back. You know, the governor asked, remember the last snowstorm, the governor asked for emergency declaration? If you recall, for the, uh, for the snowstorm that affected the coast when we get to northeastern side, back to back. I wonder if we would get any money for the plumbing of that day, of those two weekends?
It wasn't a lot, but I think that was, that was the only thing that was, um, cost-related, was any fire or police.
Get a stamp.
This one too.
Yeah.
Very wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to hold back in Mike's briefcase.
Hey, I've been, I've been bad there before. I've learned my lesson. I got a call about a week later. Do you have this document?
I don't know how you learned your lesson when you grabbed all my stuff, I mean.
Wow, that was a panic to me. Basically, I, I roll my logs and learn in a fireplace. Remember the old thing, the old thing the newspaper said you could make a log out of it? I don't think people do that anymore.
They used to do that back in the day?
They used to get a little contraption, you could make a, uh, a newspaper log, and then burn it for hours in the, in the fireplace.
That's funny. You think they would do that again, you know?
Okay.
Newspapers make good compost in your garden.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I have two, uh, appointments here. Dave's gonna ask you for some help here. You get a motion on those, in town business?
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Stan Soul for the Conservation Commission, uh, to be a member, term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
We'll make another motion, uh, to appoint Darlene Jarvis, Jarvis, to the Conservation Commission, term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Got the spelling right? And have the spelling on the last name, Darlene Jarvis. Okay, um... Lee has a finalized copy...
Just get a sign, Mike.
Okay, that's right. Lee has a finalized copy of the, uh, job description for the Welfare Director, which we worked on last week, as we recall. Do we have to sign this to Bob?
Yeah, there's a signature page. I'd like to have the original in our, um, records.
That includes all candidates being named, Lee?
Yep.
And Lee, just for, on a side, since we're talking about welfare, how many candidates do we have so far?
I've received three applications. Um, Bob has had the opportunity to review two of them, received another one today, so he'll review that, and then we'll meet. And I've got, uh, two scheduled for next week, and we should have, uh, something to bring before the board next Thursday night.
And the calls date is this Friday?
Tomorrow, yep, and, um, yeah.
Okay.
We'll interview all three tomorrow, uh, next week and get back to you.
Fifteen, three, no, four?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah, wow. Nice one, Bob, yeah? Yeah, I didn't date my section there. Can we date them all?
Yeah.
Might as well.
That's fine.
I don't have the money for it.
I tell ya, it might, it might cause me to ramble. All right, so, Lee, talk to me about the spreadsheet, Charlie.
Okay, that is, uh, the reconciliation sheet for December. We're moving on. I do have, we are reconciled with the bank through April currently, but I have to work on the summer sheet, uh, putting all the categories together for the treasurer to sign off on, so those should be forthcoming. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Lee, how's that, uh, the financial assistance working for you, the contractor?
Oh, very, very well. Um, there's still some tweaking that we have to do, because the system is, uh, problematic. Again, we're reconciling two programs technically, uh, the treasurer's, um, Quick, QuickBooks and the bank. So I think as we stay on top of it on a monthly basis, it will shorten the time and it will eliminate all the, um, unknowns.
He's paid as an independent contractor?
He is, and he's been very reasonable in his billing, so.
And his name is, um...
Matt Angel.
Matt Angel, just to let you know, he's a gentleman, um, if you remember, last year we approved a, uh, another, a full-time, a permanent part-time position to assist with Lee in the office with the financials.
I think that was actually two years ago.
Yeah, and so what has happened now is, rather than pursuing that, we actually have a, um, a person who's on...
CBA.
CBA comes in and helps us for a much less endowment figure, and so he's, he brings professionalism to the, to the town, because he does other towns do the same thing, and he's, uh, saves us money, so.
We should be able to get eventually down to like eight hours a month for reconciling, which will be really good.
Okay, continuing on, I have just, this is from the inbox. This is just a, uh, NHMA, one of our benefits. It's just, uh, so not legal cases, though, concerning towns.
It's quite interesting. It's a new edition of Knowing the Territory, and it does, the cover letter does say it's available electronically. If you find that the information in that book is, is, uh, interesting enough that you wanna possibly review it.
I'd like to, like to keep out of lawsuits if I could. Okay. It's just, it's a case, it's not a case law in there, and decisions which, uh, kind of guides, uh, our RSA is how they apply to towns. So it's interesting reading, but when we don't have any lawsuits, I'm happy with that. Okay, um, I'm gonna open up a public comment again.
I've got a public comment. Uh, today, as a cemetery trustee, uh, Leanne McCormick and Hannah Wallison brought their sixth grade class over, and the kids came with scissors and everything and our flat stones that the grass has been growing over the top of them. They cut all that grass around. They picked up, uh, tree limbs and stuff like this that were, there were a whole lot because of the, we had our spring cleaning. But then they, uh, you know, deadheaded some flowers and stuff like this, and just, uh, you know, for about a little, not quite an hour and that, why, you know, it was like a swarm of locusts, and they, they had a lot of fun. Uh, today was outdoor day for the school. And, uh, the teachers want to come back in the fall with their new class and do it again, because they felt it was very rewarding for the kids and for them.
Don, that's, that sounds great, but what about your maintenance contractor? Is he responsible for the same sort of stuff?
Uh, I talked to Art, and he doesn't pick up the, the, uh, a lot of the, uh, artificial flowers that have lost their color.
Okay.
The kids picked those up. Uh, as far as cutting around the stones and that, they do some, but you know, with a weed whacker, you can damage it. These kids use hand scissors.
I, I just wanna make sure that they, uh, he wasn't being subsidized by...
Oh, no, 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 I talked to him first, you know, what can we have him do, Art? So I wanted to make sure of that. And I wasn't sure they'd let kids have scissors even, you know, this day and age and that, but they all came and, uh...
That sounds great.
The kids, uh, really had a good time, and that, and it didn't take long. It's time well spent.
Kudos to the school for doing that.
Yes, and I think Justin, uh, was involved in making the connection and everything, so.
Oh, good. Keep them working.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, I think that's about it for us.
Okay, Chief, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, did we cover all your stuff?
Yeah, the things I notified, I guess.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the board. I'm gonna start with, um, Dave first.
Okay, I did see Woody walk in the building.
Right.
I don't know where he went, but...
It's next door.
But anyway, um, I'll start this while we wait for him to come over, and we'll go get him. Had there been any conversation yet with Mike in reference to the leaves against the...
Yep, I've sent him an email, not the phone message, so he's usually pretty good about responding. And then, uh, we've also gotten a telephone or email from Shelley. They're looking to get the grass cut again, because when it gets long, the ticks, uh, tend to be, uh, more prevalent, so they, he's probably scheduled to go out there in the, in next day or so.
Lee, did we mention the stone around here as well in the email?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, he's our, I've already confirmed that verbally.
Um, I think that's all I had.
Okay, Bob, do you?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay.
I just, I do have something in the agenda here, but I was gonna approach it once Woody is here.
Oh, yeah, right.
I did the inspection on his building, so.
Okay, great. We're gonna defer that until it comes in. One thing I had is, uh, Arts on the Common, I gotta apologize to the board. Uh, remember, recall, we made consensus last week that the library was gonna be closed completely. I was talking, I was chatting with, as I was, I was, volunteered help Friday set up, and they, they kinda required, they, the, several key people, the leaders of that group, came to me and asked if they could open it up. I kinda alluded to the concerns that we had with the subject system, the security. And so, uh, it was, I, I allowed them to get into the foyer with the absolute, absolute instructions that the rest facilities door was not to be opened and be allowed for anyone to be used, because that has access to the library. They kept it open just for, running a coffee pot for the vendors at first in the morning, in both mornings, and they stored some of the baskets, the gift baskets, in there overnight. And for the remainder of the day, after about ten o'clock on, the, the building was actually secured.
So how did, how did it get open? How did, how?
I, I authorized a key.
Oh, you had a key?
I, I assigned a key out from Lee.
Okay.
And, uh, I pleased the key up Sunday night, and I came by Sunday night after conclusion to make sure that all the facilities were locked, and the Monday, the key was returned to me Monday morning, midday. But the thing is, I apologized for that, the things, the consensus was, we kept the building completely closed.
So the general public wasn't allowed to walk around?
Neither were the vendors were allowed, just, they were just allowed in the morning for their coffee.
We had the doors blocked. We put things in front of the doors, so they couldn't, they couldn't even get in.
And my only recommendation, since Don's here, I'll take it back, that I think a lot of this last-minute, um, uh, changes could have been avoided with a courtesy meeting, a follow-up that's left for a couple weeks ahead of time. Because we had concerns, because it is town property, and they said that they felt they were grandfathered in because it was proved by a select many years ago. But the thing is, it's a new board in town, we, there are new concerns being raised, and we're worse towards the town's property, so.
Yeah.
I think just, let's reach it, Don, we just wanna make sure, and that was, Pat Murphy, I shared that with Pat Murphy, as a part of a positive note, that to do a better job on the logistical support, come and chat, have a friendly chat with us, so we can exchange our ideas and concerns.
Yeah, and how were you utilized the facilities, and we brought in a handicap bathroom and that, so we didn't use the bathroom here. So, uh, the vendors used it a little bit, but not the public. Public all used that side.
Just a saying that was used before is, previous selectmen can't tie the hands of future selectmen. So there's no grandfather unless you come and talk to us.
No, I think, I think in the, uh, future, while, you know, thirty days out or somewhere in there, you know, we'll have a good idea of what we're gonna be doing and...
And just have a friendly meeting.
And that way we can, you know, coordinate city services and stuff like this.
Yeah, and we'd like to invite even the police, because they're intimately involved with, uh...
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, all aspects, uh, you know, including Woody and that, because he takes care of the trash and...
Absolutely.
Things like that, so.
So that's how we can make it even better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just comment that whether it's a coincidence or not, the handle on the toilet broke yesterday.
No, what?
The handle on the toilet needed to be repaired, so if it was used a little bit more than it was used to, I don't know if that was the cause of it, but.
It had so many, it had so many lives, and it was out, it was running out of lives, so it finally broke. Okay.
Thanks for making us aware of that by email too, Murphy, that was helpful to see.
Okay. It's back to the board, and the thing is, we can have a.
I think let's go back up to Patrick Boon's transfer station.
Patrick, come on up.
I gave the selectmen a packet of some of this stuff, it's the personnel stuff and some of the things they might bring up tonight, in case you wanna look at what they're using.
Okay. Woody, I heard you had a death in film, sorry to hear about that.
Thank you.
And the thing is, I, we're in attendance, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Oh, yeah.
We support you there. Okay, getting down to business now. My favorite, my favorite subject, eye protection.
Yep.
Let's have a discussion on that.
Okay.
There was a, we had a rash of two injuries back to back.
Yes.
And the thing is, that brought to attention that maybe we need to look at that.
Yep.
I briefly discussed it with you, and you said you have some, and the thing is, I first said that safety glasses are important, especially our machinery, and the issue with safety glasses, if they don't fit right, they're uncomfortable, or they fog up, they're gonna end up not being worn. And the other thing is, we came to a consensus that if you wanted to order a few different styles, to try out.
Yep.
We blessed that on our feet, that way each employee could pick the one that they liked the best.
Right.
Well, I don't know about each employee picking an individual, I thought that, you know, we'd get a consensus from you on which one you thought was best, and have a higher-end safety glass that they didn't mind wearing as opposed to putting a cheaper pair down on the shelf.
What we have is, we actually have like seven pairs, eight pairs in stock.
Yeah.
As you know, because you wear glasses.
Yep.
Safety glasses are tough with regular glasses. I have a pair that Brad, because Brad's a little into glasses, that actually is vented on the side, and he seems to be okay with them. The other glasses, I mean, I've had numerous sets of glasses, they're gonna fog up regardless. They're fogging up, and to me, wearing them, that's more dangerous than what happened. So, what we're doing, what we've done, we put it in play right after it happened, is, and it's always been in play with breaking glass, you have to have safety glasses on, you know, if you're taking a toilet, taking it apart, it goes in glass up, you gotta have safety glasses on. There's three pairs up there. And then as far as the banning now, no one bans without glasses on.
Okay, good.
What type of glasses are you talking about? Because I've got safety glasses at home that don't fog.
I have, I've never had any success, I don't know what they're, I forget the name of the company. It's not like a cheap Home Depot, they came off a regular safety truck.
So, they're not those, they're not that?
No, no, they're not those, the ones for Brad are big, the big square ones, so that they actually go over his glasses, but they have vent holes in the side. Because the only other thing I've ever seen for people with glasses, because I wore glasses, is they have the clip-ons on the side, and those are more uncomfortable.
The side shields, yeah.
Yeah, the side shields, I actually have them with side shields at home, and they're, I have anti-fog stuff, they still fog up. So, we pretty much have been using them for tying off, and we have been using them in the yard as a regular anyways. When we tie a bale off, the guy, whoever's doing the veils have the safety glasses on.
Okay, there was some discussion, do we, should we mandate, and we're gonna ask you, should we mandate them more often than less often? I know you got, you.
Right, I keep talking with the crew, you know, I said there's a possibility we could have to wear these all the time, and it wasn't, it was a negative consensus, even including myself, and I'm like, he wants to wear them all the time. But they'll wear them for the situations that warrant it, and that, you know, the banning, I said seventeen years, I've never had it happen. It happened, so now we put it in play, we're in safety glasses. It's just like we have a policy, it's hung up on the board, up on the wall. When the skid steer is in operation and you're near the skid steer, you have to have a hard hat on. We've taken another step with it, and that's why we've gone for the high vis, one for traffic, and one so the guy running the skid steer can see. But, where us to wear a hard hat all day long?
No.
They're uncomfortable.
Gentlemen, I ask you for comments on the subject, do we have any more comments on the subject?
I think if they're wearing them on the, on the areas where there's a situation that they could hurt their eyes, I think that I'm good with that, I don't think.
They're wearing them when they're handling glass, right?
Yeah, when they, well, when we dump the glass, there's only one guy, and he's in the machine, and the other guy, the door is on the machine, the door does not come off, we use, the door does come off, but we don't take it off. When we first got the machine, we had some issues with, because I tried it, because it gets hot in that machine, there's no air conditioning. Pushing up the brush or whatever, had some incidents where the brush actually came over the top of the, either the bucket or the forks, and then wants to come into the cab, so after that, it actually happened to me. So, now we leave the door on, the door stays on year-round, we don't take the door off. So, that's kind of your preventative there, and when you dump glass, there's no one there. That's why we made the dumpster hydraulic, so only thing someone has to do is connect your hydraulic lines for you and put the safety chains on, because once you hook into the, drive into the glass dumpster, you can't get out of the machine, you're stuck there. So, they, another person hooks the hydraulic lines and puts the safety chains on, you drive out, inside the cab, you have a foot pedal, hydraulically dumps the dumpster, puts it back down, you go back into the building with it, and then the guy, as I said, once again, you can't get out, takes the hydraulic lines off and he takes the chains off it, and you back away with the machine, and you're all set. Because it used to be you had to manually dump that, and what was happening, one, the dumpster was heavier than the guy could hold back, two, when the glass would go into the dumpster, actually it would shoot fragments back up.
It's got stuff.
So, and then, like I said, the guy couldn't hold the thing, and it just, it wasn't working, it was too dangerous, that's why we put hydraulic cylinders on it, and eliminated one person being near the machine while it's dumping, so.
You know, if I can locate a pair of glasses.
Yep.
And have you look at them.
Yep, we'll try and try it out. Yep, absolutely.
Only because there's all types of, it could be a piece of cardboard that catches someone. It doesn't seem like a lot, but an eye injury is.
Oh, yeah.
It can be a permanent injury.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yep, absolutely.
So, if we could find something to eliminate that, I think that'd be a plus thing.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot.
I understand the hard hats are, are pain, you know?
Yep.
Even to the point where if it was fogging up on the person who wears prescription glasses, I'd be willing to entertain the idea that we provide them prescription safety glasses with side shields that take one layer off.
See, I think the thing, I talked to Brad a little bit about it, because like I say, he, I, it's been a few years since I've had to wear glasses, but because he wears them all the time.
Right.
We kind of talked about it a little bit, and I think the reason his regular glasses don't fog up is he has an actual vent, like yours right now.
Right.
You can get air passed by, but once you close that off with like those safety glasses, you have no air going past by.
But I also, I, I differ with Dave, but the thing is, safety glasses are sometimes like a pair of shoes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you have got a comfortable pair, and it's, I hate them. And so, I wanna give you some latitude.
Yep.
And we'll, I think we would support you if you wanted to try out a different pair, especially if some, I want you to have the opportunity, someone's really complaining about them, and you have to get on his case to put them on, but he says, I can't stand them because they're uncomfortable. Think out of the box and let him, look at, let him find something that might be more comfortable, and we'd be willing to entertain that. And I think.
I mean, we'll, we'll be willing to look at.
We want you to, we want, how are you to entertain that?
Right, I mean, we'll be willing to try it, but I know for me, I'm not a big fan of wearing glasses.
I understand.
I'll wear them when it's needed, but to wear, to force us to wear them, you know, for eight or ten hours a year, you know, and you actually, we wanna look at other departments as well. If you're gonna mandate it for us, you're gonna have to mandate it for others as well, is what I'm saying, rather than just singling ourselves.
Well, you're probably the most hazardous occupation in town for that.
Yeah, we're, we're, on the scale, depends on who's scale you look at, no offense, chief, we're actually a more, more dangerous job than the police department, so. I mean, I guess, we just have to find a happy medium, we're gonna draw that line.
Yep. I think it does fit within, in a personnel policy reading as well, where personal protective equipment is directed in accordance with the job you are performing, so. As long as they have some procedures and processes so that when they're using the banning machine now, make sure it's posted right on the machines.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I can, I can do it by, like I did for the other one.
Yeah, if you can post it on the banning machines and.
Okay, and as far as spot checking, if I, if I, if I just put on there and I don't see anybody, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fucking believe, I'm gonna jump on you.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think you've got the ultimate responsibility of making it work, because I may spot check at one time, but you're there much more than I am, and so the thing is, you gotta get the guys to comply with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the thing is.
You're talking about the glasses.
Why, I'm not wearing glasses.
Yeah, absolutely.
And same thing goes, so they can show up in sneakers instead of safety shoes.
Yeah, I'd actually send someone home to get their shoes.
Good, good. And because the thing is, and as far as I'm concerned, they, that's a, you can go through the steps of, that's not become a disciplinary problem, but it can become that.
Well, actually, in the, it's actually a safety violation in the safety.
Exactly, and I don't, we don't need, we gotta.
All right, no, no.
We gotta mitigate safety, so I look to you to wouldn't be the heavy, the enforcer.
Yep, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, Dave also alerted me that he made a visit as far as repairs to the transfer station.
Yes, we don't go walk around, and we probably have the same list I have, we prioritize from one to five.
Oh, yeah.
Does everyone have their coffee?
No, I gave mine away to a lot.
It looks like this, it's got a bunch of numbers.
It looks like this, much.
Okay, I got it.
It was kind of looking annoying.
No, it's not.
No, I think it's attached to another one down there.
Okay, thank you. There it is.
There you go. So, he's gonna have four or five of each one.
I don't have it.
I'll look over at the date.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Here you go.
So, what's the, what's the highest priority?
So, these were a list of maintenance items for 2018 and the future. So, I went through them with Woody, and I ranked these, one being the most important, five being the least important, and also maybe future work, like looking in, down the road several years. So, let's go down through the list one by one, and we'll look at them. We put a note on deal with undrinkable water, lean is working on that, she's gonna get a letter from the analytical company.
Can I give you what I've already found?
Yes.
Okay, so, I felt that in order to talk about one department's water test, I provided the board in your packet with the water test from all the different departments.
I think they'd already done that a few weeks back, right?
Sometime back.
Yeah.
This was in, back in January that the second test came back. So, basically, the way, I spoke to Colleen at Nelson Analytical Lab, and she basically said that the front page of the report, when we will look at the transfer station, where you look at, and you had concerns about the lead, see the lead second from the bottom there? It's, it's actually within the EPA standards, but what's on the back of the sheet, which is what you saw that was outside of the EPA standards?
Yeah.
That, those two tests came back when you just opened the spigot and test the water immediately. So, basically, if you run the water, the lead runs out, basically. So, it's when the faucet is not being used for a long amount of time.
Never even heard of doing a test when you just open the spigot up.
Any, any test I ever done with the state over.
This is what she said, this back test that says outside EPA would have been that they opened the test and then tested the, the water, I'm not sure what that time period is, but then after, they also have to let the water run for a longer period of time, and that's where you can see on the front of the page, it came in within EPA standards.
Okay.
So, she explained to me that if this were public waters and we were required to have an EPA ID, we would need to address these fluctuations of up and down, not meeting the EPA standards. But where it's just a town building for private, small staffing, small amounts of use, we could mitigate the problem by getting a bubble water if we wanted to, or some kind of a water disposal, but as far as being required to change this by law, there are, there is no law. It's up to the board's decision to say, do we wanna get a type of water treatment? Do we wanna provide water in a, like a dispenser for drinking? Do we wanna get water, bottled water for them to drink?
What did she say about the arsenic section?
She said that she's well aware that the entire town of Dunbarton is high in arsenic and that.
Did she state any reference to public waters on that, or?
She said any of these that are out of EPA, if that was for like a school, or daycare, or some kind of public gathering place, these would have to be addressed with some kind of water system.
Since it's not, I think is, I like to recommend, Woody pursue the same solution the police department pursues.
Okay.
You know where? Bottle of water.
Okay.
And I think is, I figure.
Now, when you say bottle, like do you mean one of the bottle dispensers where they go grab?
No, it's not, you go to, as the chief does, goes to market basket, picks up about six cases, or BJ's or anything like that, and has it available for his employees. I estimated, let me say, three, four, three bottles a day during non-really hot days, maybe up to five bottles a day during hot days, and it'll vary during the year. I think it'd be like three hundred dollars of water, that's, that's like.
Three hundred what, a month?
Three hundred a year.
A year, because if we look at four, five dollars for a twenty-four pack, you know, some weeks, and you take that.
How many employees on board on one day?
Six.
Five.
Five, yeah.
So, five times five is twenty-five bottles.
So.
As for the summer, it's still, it's, it's much cheap, much less expensive.
Do you think you go through a case a week?
Oh, I'm just looking at that.
Oh, easily, yeah.
Yeah?
He's saying a lot of bottles in one day on a hot day.
Yep.
If he has five employees on a Saturday.
I haven't heard time drinking three bottles.
No, but when you're out there working.
Yeah, yeah, it's diff, because I, I bring water by the gallon, and it's nothing for me to drink three quarts of a gallon on a Saturday.
Is that another option, picking up gallons of water?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, no, I'm, I'm looking at, how, how expensive are those bottles that we flip over the whole shed and you have?
I haven't looked into those at all.
Those are expensive.
They are?
The bottles, especially if they have them delivered. I, I go out and maybe once a month, I pick up six or eight cases of water.
Yeah.
I pick up six or eight gallon bottles, and the gallons we use to make coffee and stuff like that, the other bottles, we, that we drink, and it's really convenient. It's, it's easy to keep you people hydrated because they take the bottle, they take it with them, they put it in the back pocket, they're out working, and they can sit on it during the day. So, you're, not only you're providing them clean water, but you're also keeping hydrated, which is, it's an issue for the, I'm sure it's an issue for.
Do you, do you have a refrigerator that you store them in, or?
No, I, right now, I'm just, if they're at room temperature, I'm gonna see if they can pick up us, like a dorm-sized fridge, just in the water.
Is that what you'll be doing at room temperature, you have a fridge?
We have a fridge in room as well.
Yeah, it's not real big, though.
No, actually, I, we just acquired another one.
Oh, good.
A little bit taller, it's about this tall.
So, if we go this route for them, the, if you look at the water test for the highway, it's even worse, it's in your bag.
Oh, yeah, we do the highway.
So, before we go to highway, so it's safe to say our water is not potable, and there should be a sign saying that.
Oh, there's just be a sign.
She said it does not need to be a sign, because if, if we have people, my.
Well, no, I mean, our, it's our guys that go in there, so.
You just, you gotta tell them, don't drink the water.
Mine are similar to his, and I, I asked her, if someone comes in, or someone, occasionally someone says, I need to take a pill, or I have to take a drink of water, or I, someone on a bicycle that says, can I have a glass, I need some water. As long as, she says, as long as you're not drinking it every single day, for, in large quantities, there won't be an issue.
Like you said, we're probably all drinking it at home.
Yes, but she said a sign saying it's not potable is, we don't need to do that at all.
Okay, so I guess we're giving you the ability to buy bottled water, and we'll solve it that way for now.
Okay. I, I, I think that'd be just a good thing to do for employees, I, to me, it's the right, the right thing to do.
No, no, I totally do, I just wanted to get it, because this tells me nothing.
And some may use it, and some might bring them out, so.
You know, that's why I put it on the list, because I wanna know, if you wanna do something for the guys, and this is what we're gonna do, they don't want them drinking this, then.
I don't want them to.
Then that's the way we're gonna go, but I wanted that, you know, it's ancient stone, and now we know not to drink it, and we're gonna provide them with water.
I mean, if they had to in, in emergency, they should open the faucet and let it run for a few minutes so that they stagnant water, because you guys don't drink out of the faucet. We run our faucets so often that it, we, we don't, our.
Our eyewash is at the faucet.
The eyewash is no problem.
Right.
Eyewash is no problem, it's ingestion.
Going on to item number two.
Yep.
The septic had been pumped already, so that item is completed. Item number three, there's an outside silcock that is showing some wear, and. I recommend that we.
Yes, true.
Item number three.
Silcock.
Silcock showing some wear and some bypass water. Silcock showing some wear and and some bypassed water. So I recommended to get that one going, so I set that as a number one. And uh, Woody's gonna get an estimate on getting that repaired.
That's a plumber?
Yeah. Um, item number four, replace four lights by the compactor building um, with LED. They're not LED lights now and uh, two of them are failing right now, so.
What kind of lights are these?
They're uh, halogens.
No, I I know.
They're work lights on the on the outside of the building. They're, they said on like a four inch.
Like if he comes in to move the dumpsters on the lower side at night, it's on the back side of that building.
When we snow blow as well, that lights up that area.
Gotcha.
Is that on the outside?
It's on the outside of the building.
Down in the lower section, so I put that as a number one, and I think that uh, we could call um.
Electrician.
Bernie, he's been really good about.
Yeah, I actually have to call him on another issue, so.
Okay, you include that then?
Yep.
So Woody, if we can get estimates on these items, so that way we can improve about one of the selectmen meetings. This, item number five is a floor for lunchroom and office and bath. We talked about this in the previous years. And I talked with Woody, it's just raw plywood there now showing some staining and some heavy wear. I talked with Woody about possibly getting uh, a laminate type flooring. Some of the ones that uh, are used for for high wear, snap together, they're they're generally just a couple dollars a square foot, easy to install.
Oh.
And um, maybe putting that down in those couple of areas there, clean that up so that they can sweep it and keep it clean.
Is that something that they can do or do we have to?
I'm thinking uh, maybe look into hiring the shoe marker uh.
Yeah, he is giving us a quote on the.
So it's nice to see if we can get him to give us an estimate.
I I can back and draw that.
We'll put that as a number one. In that same area, item number six, I put as a number one too, mud tape repair, paint the bathroom area. It's a small bathroom in there. It has partial taping on it, but it's never been painted, so it's pretty grungy and dirty looking. So I'd say before we do the floor, we paint that. And I think that same carpenter should be able to do all of that. So paint the walls and then put the floor down.
Yeah.
And these items we're talking about are big dollar values, so I think we should, if we get estimates, we'll get going on.
Get going on, absolutely. Bobby, a consensus?
Um, item number seven is be for the same guy, we replace broken trim on the compactor building. There's three areas, I think, where there's some damage where vehicles have hit it. Not very big piece of PVC and Woody actually has some of the material. So I'd like to get that right on the schedule. Um, item number eight, paint compactor building. Now, this isn't the exterior cuz that's behind the side. This is the ceiling area as you drive through the drive-through section. And we had talked about painting the inside of that compactor area, but the raw plywood actually doesn't look that bad right now, so we put a three on that. And hold off to a future year.
Okay.
You see that three on the inside?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. Um, replace repair wood on recycling center and paint. I put a note on the right hand side, the front and the right hand side have the most wear. And I put that as a number one to hopefully do this year after we have the town hall squared away. So we'll probably put a RFP in there for request for the pricing on that, on probably those two sides at least.
This sounds like a fairly small job. We should maybe get quotes.
Just for the bits.
Yep, that'd be fine. Okay, so item number ten, add two windows to the box trailer. I put a number two on there. What Woody is looking for there is the airflow gets well over a hundred degrees in the summer months. Um, it's a box trailer that they store some of their items in, um, that walks directly off the dock in the back area there. And uh, the temperature gets up very high, there's no airflow in there. It doesn't look like windows would be able to be installed very easy. So I'm thinking maybe some vents in that. And I put a two on there thinking, it's not a high priority, maybe um, later this year or early next year, we can look at that.
If the budget is still looking good, we can do it this year towards the end.
Yeah, I guess looking when Dave and I talked, just something to get some of the stagnant hot air out of there. That's all we're looking for.
Now, item number eleven, replace sorting, that's supposed to be bench, not beach. And trim on the front recycling center. Um, he has plywood on there that consists of three pieces. And legs that come straight down. It makes them hard to clean the floor in the recycling center and sweeping under there. He'd like to angle the legs down towards the wall and put maybe a laminate top on there so they can clean it. Because now when stuff spills on it, it's raw plywood, yeah, so. I'm thinking that's a number one, and I think we should do that um, along the same time that we paint that front building.
The other thing with that plywood, like I showed Dave, they did it in a couple sections, and one section's actually bending down like this. It was a, like they did like a three foot piece or two foot piece, and then like a piece about that wide was added on. Now that it's.
Separated.
It's separated now.
No, that's not the side where the public comes up to the counter, it's the side where the workers.
It's the side that we're on.
But we will um, I think put laminate right through, cuz there's a piece of plywood on the outside, a middle one, and then another smaller one, so it's the same shell.
Laminate would be great, cuz it would just, you could wipe it up in the end of the day.
Lee, I I uh, would recommend that we try and contact Langley Woodworking on that. He lives in town here and he custom installs laminate a lot of times on local jobs.
You don't want grand?
I think we better try not.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, where are we there?
We'll do it in the end, I think it is.
Okay, item number twelve, new roof on the recycling center. I put a note there, the translucent panels always wear much quicker than the metal panels. They're getting almost see-through. I put a two on there, maybe later in the fall or early next year. We should look at replacing at least those translucent panels.
What, and the thing is, translucent panels uh.
They let the light through inside the.
Are they are they are they weatherproof, still weatherproof now?
They're ma- I think right now they are, but they're made of fiberglass and he's been getting some leaks in the building.
Okay.
But he's not sure they're coming from those panels yet.
How do you get the metal to be translucent? Is there such a thing?
No, no, it's fiberglass.
It's like an insert.
Just for, okay, so you wouldn't be putting metal, you just replace the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Replace the translucent panels. They normally come eight, ten, twelve, and sixteen foot, and I think those are twelves on there.
Like I told Dave, we have had the roof repaved at least twice now, where different spots, they went up and they seam sealed around the.
The metal.
Around the translucent panels, they seam sealed some of the holes in it, and now we seem to have some other holes popping up.
You'll see, item number thirteen, expand recycling center, that's um, way down in the future, so I'll put a five on that. Meaning it might not even hit this board. Um, item number fourteen, rebuild the burn pit. I put a four on that only because his blocks are starting to wear and crack from the heat. But I think we can get a few more years out of him. He just, again, wants to have it on the agenda so that in the future, he's looking ahead on his buildings and is.
Just safety shoes, safety glasses at the burn pit, what do you think?
Me? No, that melt to your face.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm the only one that goes down there, as far as setting the setting the pile off.
That's all I ask.
Yeah, no, it takes several thousand degrees down there.
Okay, item number fifteen, moving along. This I deemed as the most important thing we could do, fencing and safety rails on the retaining walls. Um, I put a number one on that. The retaining walls next to our dumpsters where we put in construction debris, glass, and metal. Are about twelve inches off the ground.
Right.
So then, a child either would fall in the dumpster or between the dumpster, and there's several spots where the jogs are. That there's room for a child to fall down on the corner between where the dumpsters are parked. So my recommendation to Woody on that, where there are concrete walls already, is to have it pinned and another two feet of concrete added to the top of the walls.
Will it interfere with this with your work process? If it's too big, higher?
No, when, actually Dave be going and explaining how he.
Yeah, uh, when you're looking at, you'd still be able to back a pickup truck.
Right.
And unload off your tailgate. And so it'd be three feet high from the cement pavement. And thirty-six inches should be the minimum for somebody falling over an eight foot wall.
Yeah, that's the way Gulf Towns is, come to think of it, cuz we did a lot of.
So I'm thinking that's the most important area there that we could possibly get into a bad situation, so.
So we need a mason for that one.
Uh, we have a, we have a local contractor, foundation contractor that did those walls originally that Woody's gonna contact in town.
Cuz he'll have a plan of actually where all the rebar is in that wall.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't have it, we might still have a plan, but he's the one that.
Did the, he's familiar with.
So they'll drill it, pin it, and pour two feet on top of that wall.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Okay. So going to item number sixteen, repair and place pad underneath compactor box. I put a four on that. Thinking that this board won't even see it. It's, the cement pad is chipping. And you can't really patch it because it would continue to flake off. It would have to be pulled up someday and repaired.
What it is, is to give you a little better visual where the box runs in and out because of the width, it runs the same path all the time. Um, it's actually eroded away at the concrete. Um, ear down probably half to an inch in spots, and there's some spots a little bit more. I mean, it's still usable, but once again, I'll put it on the list so that it doesn't, it's there, it doesn't get forgotten about.
So number seventeen is add gutters to the front of the recycling center left of the overhead doors. So there are gutters on on the overhead door section. This would stop the splashback on the front of the building, causing all that flaking of the paint. I put a number three on that only because I don't think it needs to be done this year, but should be looked at next year.
Well, if we're gonna paint, I hate to have this new paint get screwed up too, so I might wanna think move that to a two maybe.
Um, Lee, did they come out and do this gutter job yet for you?
No, but he has contacted me and I replied and I CC his, Mike's information, cuz he's the closest. And if he's not available, Mary is aware of what needs to be done.
When he comes for that, why don't we have a look at that?
Yep, I can do that.
And get an estimate on what that will cost.
Yep.
Cuz I I, you know, if you're gonna do any painting down there, which we may do, I I hate to just paint and then have it all come off again.
So we have paint compactor building a three and then repair gutters.
Three.
A three also, okay. But if we can get it done in advance then?
Yeah, that's that's not, that's not, that's not a budget budget, a bust, a budget buster.
Buster, yeah.
Okay, item number eighteen, I put a three on only, it says crack seal all pavement. His pavement layer there is a base coat worn down to the rocks. With no top coat ever put on it. Now, I, right now, when you look at that pavement, it's all kind of a whitish color. If we seam crack it, it's gonna have black lines like spaghetti laying all over it without steel coating the whole top. So I didn't think that uh, it had enough cracks in it to warrant doing right now, so I put a three on it. And you guys can take a look at it, see what you think on it as well. Add retaining wall blocks to wall. There's a section of wall um, around his compactor area that he puts glass in, is that right?
No, um, this one here uh, is down where we store the two, those are the two dumpsters. What it is, it's on one side, it's flush with the hot top. What I want to do is go up one more row of blocks. They're the um.
Stackable blocks.
Yeah, well, actually, these are, they're not even the stackables, they're the um, leftovers. You know, when the guy comes back and he's got part of a load on his truck, they dump it and they make a block out of it. That's what those blocks are. They're relatively inexpensive. Um, even if we put it off till next year, it's fine. But I want to go one more row, one more course around. And what that'll do is the way it is right now, when they go up there with the snowball, I did some of the snowballing, or with the plow, or when you're dumping. There's about a twenty-eight inch gap between the wall and the dumpster. I mean, even very easy, that snowball could very easily go off. I mean, we try to stay away from it, but you know how stuff happens. It was just one thing I I put on the list and say, hey, you know, in the future, or maybe if I've got some money in my budget towards the end of the year, I can talk to Jeff. Cuz he's originally built the wall, and we just used what we had for blocks.
Gotcha.
Just so you know that only his employees go down there.
Right, it's just for us, it's more for our safety than.
Okay, so that's why I didn't deem that one quite as important here.
It's not nice.
Item number twenty, replace all locks with the same key lock sets. So they're all key like. I put a two on that. If we had some money at the end of the year, we might be able to hit that, but for right now, they are working. Um, item number twenty-one, insulate recycling center. I put a four on that. For several years down the road, we'll take care of the the more needed things that I think first. Item number twenty-two, add propane heat to the recycling center. Obviously, I put a five because that's after.
We have the one heater now. It was kinda, when I put those on there, uh, it was kinda to think of more of, if we decide to expand the building. That's a good time to, A, do the roof, uh, and then section off one section where we work. And just concentrate on heating that one area. You know, A, spray foam the walls, you know, you have a new roof, so you can insulate up above. And then it would be just in that work, and the rest of it would be cold storage, as opposed to the whole building being cold stored. And we do have the heater over the, over the window, and we have a, well, we had another backup heater, we have to get another one, cuz that one failed.
But uh. Okay, it's rough on the window, in the winter.
Right. I guess, you know, it's, what's up that makes the employees a little bit happier kind of thing.
So item number twenty-three is a new AC unit installer removal. The AC was working today. Um, it's an older unit, at least it's go on and off, it kinda works as it will, wants to.
Is that a window unit?
Yeah.
Isn't that a wall unit?
Window.
It's built into the wall.
It's a wall unit that's in the wall.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's not in a, it's not a.
It is actually, it's when they'll be, uh, a former selectman about.
Donated or something, right?
Yeah, about ten years ago.
Oh, it has to be moved now.
Yeah, it's at least that. He's like, I don't have the use for it, do you need it? Like, absolutely, so we had it put in the wall.
So I put a two on there thinking Woody can find another one, somebody's gonna recycle.
Well, people, people bring down units all the time when they move it, they don't, they can't sell them. I'm sure, it's gotta be, at least you might find one newer than what you have.
So to wrap this up, there's eight items on a twenty-three item list that have a.
A one.
A one that I'd like to try and work on this summer and try and get done um, with our budget.
I think, yeah, I I'm I'm in favor of Bobby, are you?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at this and I, yeah, uh, are we gonna adjust the public works building?
Yeah, I think we are gonna do it and uh, I think we're gonna get dollar values on these estimates from between Lee and Woody. And then we'll move forward after we have dollar values on all of them and kind of.
Just so that in case, you know, it gets tight.
Yeah.
We might be able to accommodate two and two places, you know?
And it might be at the end of the year, we find we have three or four thousand left, where we can kind of tie up some of them.
But some of, some of the most important ones, I think we can go ahead and get some quotes on.
The most important ones, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I'm thinking all those number one items, if we get quotes on them, we can pick as a board, you know, which one we wanna hit on.
Like I told Dave, I mean, uh, I know you guys talked about, cuz he talked about it with me. You know, if you have a chance, you're gonna do some adjust building, some of my building paint. If push comes to shove, I'd rather see you do his building than my building. Because his has been, you know, it's been a lot of years since it's been done.
It's been on the list and it's gotten bumped down at least four.
It's gonna be seven years. Well, that's what I'm saying, I'd rather see before his building, mine's, as Dave would tell you, is not, you know, other than the front and that side. The back and the left side aren't as bad. His building is bad.
But if you recall, at the last meeting, we made made a uh, comment that uh, we have to wait till the library quotes come in. Soon as we get the library locked up, then we can actually.
Right, and we might be, might be able to fix a lot of your issues and Jeff's issues.
Right, we plus up the budget or not, I don't think you have to do a lot.
I just wanted you to know that, you know, if it push comes to shove, and hey, we don't have enough to do your building, and and you have enough to take care of Jeff, take care of Jeff. His has been on the, you know, he's been on the roll for a long time.
Do you think if we give you um, to get your portion of these estimates, you have copied the list of the guy too now? And Lee, do you think within, I hate to wait the whole month, but I'm thinking maybe um. Maybe the first week in June, we could get the estimates together to look at on some of these items?
I think personally, I would like to wait until at least the end of the month, only because I wanna see what those.
The end of June?
No, no, I'm sorry, the end of May.
I had asked for the first week of June.
For the first week of June?
Just to get the estimates.
Yeah, I think.
You, I, we're gonna do my best. I know what a contract is uh, jamming right now.
Yeah, they are very busy, yeah.
So they, you know, I mean, we'll shoot for that.
Yeah, and if you, do your best, that's all we can ask.
Um, so why don't we put a date, just so we all know, what, on that first week of June, are we meeting?
I don't think so.
But there'd be a second week, give him a little more week, that'd be all right.
Yeah, the fourteenth, we're back.
So why don't we plan on, if you write the fourteenth on that, Woody, Lee will try and have estimates on the number one items.
That'll give you a little more time to do it too. I think that's.
It was a month, right?
Yeah. A little bit less, but that's good.
But just the number ones.
Just the number ones.
Just the number ones.
Um, one thing I, on the wall, when you and I were at the other end, you want me to have him look at pinning that other side as well? You write where that dumpster is, where you drive up?
Um, yeah, I think we should pin that wall and then determine how we're gonna do that section.
Do the other section now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Dave, on maintenance? That's good. You got, you, you, Mike?
Yeah, I got a list.
Okay, good.
Yeah, once you set that, that's gonna be in the concrete section that.
Okay.
All right.
Yep. All right, we're all set. Let's move on to the next item. All right.
What is our next?
Oh, we've got a couple things for our, for the transfer station manager. All right, now, the item. Woody, so the emails. All right, when it comes to classes, a dream, five Ws, who, what, when, and where, or one word personal, and it's the end of subject.
Yep.
Just think of, just, and one email for your future, just when Lean asks you, just say, who, what, when, and where, and the last thing is out there, and the last thing, a dollar figure.
Uh, zero, and you already paid for it.
Okay, which is great. No, but, but the thing is, in the future, uh, be, be more communicative of that. It was, it's not harassment, it's just that, um, sometimes I, I would, I'd say, oh, come on, we can, we can do better. And so, just think of five Ws. Oh, yeah, I gotta put that, and this is it, this is this. And the thing is, and I'm not even gonna question, I don't think she should question. Because you're gonna have it covered as far as your, your operation of the transfer station. Um, that's not in question. Just that the information's gotta be come forward. If it's a personal thing, one word, personal, then nothing else applies. She doesn't have to know anything else about it.
Right.
Okay, next thing.
You, uh, had, has there been any resolution to the person that drove away while?
No, I'm coming, coming, coming. Well, we'll bring it right up then. All right. Chief, we wanna chime in on this. We had someone drop stuff off, which requires payment. And I, even I know that. The, the only thing that they, they'll wait for him, when I have a piece of woman, uh, uh, treated wood, and it's this big, they don't charge me. If I have a truckload, they're gonna charge the dickens out of me as appropriate, or anything that's trying to be. Supposedly, someone dropped off, uh, he made a statement here.
Yeah, I asked him then.
Yeah, and, um, uh, he didn't pay. And that's.
Looks like it was a quarter truck, Woody.
I never saw the load. I was there, but I never saw the load.
Information on that. But the thing is, if it was, what it is, is, is theft of services. It's outright theft of services. I don't think it's gonna come to this board level. I think, in my opinion, these guys can, can tell me I'm wrong. I think you can handle it. The thing is, I'd say, if I came in and I was ignorant to the fact, and I was, I was a, say, a jackass, and I was saying, I pay taxes here, I'd say, okay, let me educate you. You do pay taxes, but if this is, is the law, and the thing is, I'll let this slide one time, but I'm gonna educate you as a resident of this town, and you let it slide one time. And then after that, if he does it again, you don't confront the guy, you call the police chief, and you, and you basically have the guy arrested for theft of services. Gentlemen, chime in and tell me I'm wrong. I'm trying to give you that.
Right, no, I, I wanted him to do that because we, in all honesty, that's probably the first time we ever had anyone since I worked there that was, that spoke to, I mean, people have spoken to you like that before, but usually it's, they had a bad day, whatever, we just brush it off. But for the most part, everybody pays, they never.
Woody, can you, can you educate me? It says it had a little bit more than a quarter of a truckload. Do we typically charge for like construction debris with a quarter truck?
Anything over a quarter of a truckload. So, in other words, if your pickup bed is four by eight with two foot sides.
It's more than a quarter truck.
You're allowed six inches in that bed, the length and the width of the bed, and no charge, once a week, which means if you drop it Tuesday, you can't drop again until the following Tuesday.
And the cost is twenty-five if you're over that?
And it, over that, it's, uh, depending on what the, if, if it's straight wood, it has to be straight wood because anything mixed, shingles or sheet rock, there's no, you could get a barrel. It, it's already on our fee schedule. What you can dump, what you can dump. Um, if it's a mixed load, it's two dollars a cubic foot and there's no free part in it. If it's, um, wood, straight wood, pressure-treated, that kind of thing, uh, your plywood, particle board, all that, it's a dollar and a half a cubic foot. We measure it off length, width, height, we divide it out, and that's what it costs.
I have seen that people go out and measure it.
So, for it to be twenty-five dollars?
My guess is it was more than a quarter of a load. Uh, I could do some rough math. I don't know, I wasn't actually right there when it happened. I was in the building, but not right there. And this came, really brought my attention after the fact. We have radios, phone calls.
But the thing, you, that's, that's.
It doesn't happen very often, in other words.
But that's an internal problem, and I think you can handle it. Because the only thing is, you have a license plate here. And the thing is, there's a gentleman right there who can find out who it was. And then I would say, I'd be proactive and say, but I'm not gonna tell you how to manage it. I don't think these guys wanna tell you how to manage it.
Right, I just wanna make sure because I know that this, my first thought is bring it to the board because I know these can be very sticky situations.
Exactly. But, and I'm glad the chief's here, so he's aware of it too, because chief, that, that is stuff with services. Well, it's, it's something we could follow up. Something like that, generally, you just, you have to make your answer to the phone call and get it resolved.
Right. Because if you've talked to him once and then he continues to do it, then you have an issue with.
One time?
Right, I think, you know, my kinda course is, you know, let it go, let this, this is fine, let it go, let it be a learning lesson. To us, so now we know, don't have to go direct to the selectmen. Like I said, I know these can be very sticky situations and they can go from being something little to blowing into something.
You could, you could be, you could lead to violence too.
Right, so that's why I'm like, you know what, we'll send it to the selectmen. They're blessed in either way or I don't wanna do it.
We have you back.
And I think they did the right thing. At least they got a plate on them, but they didn't really confront the person too much about it because.
Yeah, you don't wanna do, that's, that's what he's, he gets paid for.
Do you want to hold on to that for the purpose of this license plate, so if it happens again?
Keep it on.
Or if you wanna call the guy, uh, he could probably help you down. Could you do that?
Can you make me a copy of this?
Yes.
I'll scan it, that way you can.
But the thing is, I'm thinking, let the police chief call and ask.
Yeah, I think we should probably, you know, and not, not have the transfer station. But if it was on site, that's when you could have.
Right, right.
But when, once the police chief calls, I mean, the guy's gonna like, hopefully melt and not say anything.
Right, you know, and maybe, you know, it is what it is, water over there, but so it doesn't happen again. Like I said, this is what.
I did say to the chief, I had a bad day, I shouldn't have reacted like that or something like that.
Hold on, go to the sound.
Um, three weeks ago, I think?
Recent. Okay, so, uh, we, we support you. And the thing is, a gentleman behind you who will support you too. So, I just wanna, and the thing is, pass it on to employees to.
Right, so we're having a.
What you don't wanna do is confront public like that. It doesn't win, doesn't, no one, no one wins.
We have a meeting, uh, first thing today morning, so.
Okay. Okay, um, I understand that briefing leave, there's an issue about forty-three hours or just forty hours. Bobby, you wanna help me with that?
What's that, with this one?
Yeah.
It's on hours work, though.
Uh, I, I actually can't discuss this part now. As I pass it on, I can't discuss this. I'm having, I'm getting advice from my legal counsel on it, as I.
Tell him to call here, give you, oh, it's in the truck. I'll give you the labor commissioners.
Well, look, I may have my concerns, but I don't wanna step on, I, I was very frustrated with it. Um, I know what the personnel plan says now. I mean, I had a lot going on, so it shouldn't have been this overtime, but the way I read it and the way obviously it's being read to me is different, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into a match with anyone on it. I talked to my counsel and let him give me what his thought is on it. And maybe his thought's the same as your thought, but I don't wanna.
See, you're going with your counsel?
Yeah, to let him talk, talk to me about it.
I like to put this to bed when you get your, your violence.
Yeah, I wanna find out from him, and he may say, well, this is this and this, because he has a copy of the personnel plan. I just wanna make sure that what I'm saying is right and what, you know, or what I'm saying is wrong, so I know what, so it don't happen again.
Right. But if he checks with the Department of Labor, which wouldn't be hard, it's on hours work, not hours that you compensate for.
Right, and I, I understand the overtime part, but.
Just so you, uh.
The other part that I don't understand is the other part I don't understand. Know what I'm saying? I get it that you don't pay out at overtime. I, when she sent me a thing on that, I was like, oh, yeah, forget it, that's on hours work. But my understanding, I'll just say anyways, because he's gonna get a copy anyways, is that there's thirty hours of briefing time, and then there's thirteen hours of work time. That's forty-three hours at straight time. That's my understanding. It's forty, you know what I mean?
Yeah. But three of those hours was for, so you called, how long did it take you to shut the alarm off?
I was there for two hours. Actually, when it was, there was a bird inside the building.
My question, the thing is, now, the thing is, I'm gonna put the labor behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna, I, I agree with you. Since you're a counsel, let's, let's delay that.
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you realize we have an, an alarm system down in the transfer station? Why do we need an alarm system?
We've been broken to eight times.
What's so valuable down there that we, that's what we're protecting?
They take everything. They've taken tools, copper, brass, wire, trash cans, hand trucks, gloves, uh, you name it, they take that. And it's also foul protection.
How many, how many false alarms have we had?
This year?
Yes.
One.
Okay.
That I know of. I mean, I could check with the chief.
So, it's not?
No, it's not, uh, not as like it used to be. Uh, before we had the new system installed, it was going off pretty regular for.
Okay, when was the last breakdown we've had down there?
It's probably been five or six years.
I don't remember. Well, yeah, I think we had one.
It's right when you, I think when you first came on, we had it down there.
We had, we had an issue with breakdown, yeah. Do we think it's still, is it still a problem? Gentlemen, help me. Do you think, do you think it's worthwhile that we keep all the systems on there? Because we gotta pay X number of dollars to monitor the system.
Oh, we do?
We, we monitor it, yeah.
Does it come out of his budget?
No, it.
Comes out of the town budget. And their monitor is not just.
Say again?
Out of the town budget.
Well, he, we, it's part of the, there's a one contract with all the alarms.
Right.
That's why.
Is it, is it big money to maintain it or not?
Two hundred and eight dollars maybe, a year, or two seventy-six a year.
He comes in, does a test on, he's actually.
I think that's pretty minimal to have it at least covered and know if somebody's in there or not.
Well, that also monitors your fire as well. That's monitoring fire and police. And there's, just like the ones here, there's also a panic button on there as well of that system.
Okay.
So, I think it's worth it.
All right.
I mean, you have some valuable equipment in it. I mean, you have a skid steer that's, you know, that's sixty thousand dollars or whatever they are now.
When you order those tires, those tires are gonna be expensive.
Actually, I had some, I told Dave about that today.
Could, could we, um, since we're talking about this in general, um, can we talk on, I may have erred on, on, in the, in his favor in, uh, approving bereavement for ten-hour shifts, when our personnel plan typically, a holiday's eight hours, a personal day's eight hours, a vacation day is eight hours. And I know that you adjust your hours and make up your hours when you're taking a week off to reflect that, but yet.
Well, if you want, let me just ask a question. On a holiday, like, uh, we have Memorial Day coming up Monday.
Right, eight hours.
Then be eight hours. So, you always do eight hours on your holidays?
Holidays, the way it plans right in holidays are eight hours, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I have, I end up having to do is make up two hours on another day.
Correct, yeah.
So, you may have overpaid him for the.
I may have over-approved what he filled out for our bereavement request. Now, thinking about what he was asking, I understood he needed days off, but if our personnel plan specifies things a certain way, then it should follow through with other.
I don't think it specifies a bereavement, though. I think that's the.
It doesn't specify any, it doesn't specify anywhere throughout the course.
Well, the thing is, we'll just take that for action, and when we, uh, do the annual review, the personnel plan, we have to.
So, bereavements, uh, for death of the family, it's not in there at all?
It just says three days. It doesn't say, uh, and the normal work day is an eight hour, after getting paid a holiday or a personal day or vacation day, those are paid on an eight hour.
How are your normal days down there? Are they ten-hour days or eight-hour days?
I try to make them ten. Sometimes they're a little more, sometimes they're a little less, depending on, if I gotta adjust like, uh, in the next week or so, I have some adjusting to make because of the classes I'm going to. It might not be eight hours at the class. So, if it's only seven hours at the class, I come back and make up the hours.
Things, if we have something like, already, we have something for like, uh, a holiday leave rate hours, I think we just need to clean up the personnel plan to make it do it. I don't think we can, you can't do it retroactive. I think it's not fair.
No, I, I, yeah, I don't think it's fair either because there's nothing there, so that's something you'll have to look at when you're doing the personnel.
But that's why I was asking, what is normal day is? If it's normally a ten-hour day, and it was bereavement on this one occasion, I don't think it's so much as a mistake because that's his normal day.
But we can, we can address that in the personnel plan. So, Lean, I don't think you did anything wrong. I think you did correct.
Right, because if his normal day was ten hours that day and it was the day that he had to go to that, I don't really think he made a mistake there because.
Okay, well, we need to look at it because if he's gonna get a ten-hour bereavement pay and everybody else gets an eight-hour bereavement pay, then the equality is not there. It needs to be defined.
Like Mike said, we can update that section, so from here on, it's clear. But I'm saying for right now, if his normal day is ten hours.
Leave it as that.
Leave it as it was. So, I don't think he made a mistake doing that.
Okay.
That's good, okay. Let's, uh, I got a couple more things, and I'm gonna try here.
Okay.
Do you have, do you already have a current drop-off for clothing and shoes?
Yes.
Does it work well? Was that the?
I actually, now that you brought this up.
Now, before you say anything, when I came down, I dropped off the paper so we could all have a copy tonight, and Lean said somebody had come in asking to drop one off, and I said, jeez, it's funny, I was just there and somebody was picking up.
Yep.
So, she said, oh, I didn't know there was one down there. So, I said, yeah, there is one. They were taking it.
It's the, uh, the company is the Eagle Smith, the town's done business with them for the better part of twenty years.
Right, I have, my wife is always putting stuff, I don't wanna, my old clothes in there.
We have two bin locations, school, transfer.
Also, we have two locations.
No, I think they just removed it from the school. Someone just told me they did.
Just for construction?
I don't think our, I don't, I don't think it's over there anymore. I'll check. Okay, we, we, that's cool, that's good.
And what we get paid for that, it's so much a pound. I think it's like five cents a pound.
They actually reverse it, so.
It goes, um, several years ago, it was set up with the school and with the board of selectmen. That money is earmarked for programs for the children at the school. Same with the program that we do is cartridge for kids, inkjet toner cartridges.
Right.
We ship them out, we get the containers itself for free, we ship the stuff out. They give us a label, we don't pay for any of it.
Right.
We box it up, that money's earmarked for the kids at the school. Um, we set it up that way, you seem to get a little bit more participation in it when it's for, for children, and it's not for, um, school budgeting or anything like that. It's for specialty EMI, for the kids, uh, programs for them.
I've been, I've been here X number of years. The thing is, I think we, if, if we do inkjets like that, I think we need to have a little, reinvigorate a little PR there. That's something on the side, if we're gonna do something like that.
Yep, I put in.
Now, let's talk about the clothes now.
So, on the clothes, I got a call Tuesday. I don't even know who this person is.
We, we gotta, we gotta.
Yeah, she sent me an email.
Yeah.
And talk, talk, talk. They said, okay, when I have a minute, I'll review your proposal, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah.
And it's only, I haven't had time to look at.
Well, the thing is, if you already have one, why do we need a second one?
Well, come to find out, this gets a little bit more stickier. I actually talked to Pete, the owner of the other company, the Eagle Smith. Um, and this company is a takeoff from a former employee of his, and it just, it.
Sounds shady.
Well, I don't think it's shady. I just think it's a little competition, right, really?
Exactly.
My feeling is that it's in place, it works. Um, they come and pick up, I'm happy with them. I can soon stay with them. I mean, I'll look at the policy.
It's never overflowing on the ground, right?
Today was, uh, this week was an exceptional week.
They pick up every week?
They try to be there every week. Sometimes it's every other week.
Woody, if you can assure me there's no problem with the current one, I have no, I have no.
Yeah, I have, but I think to do justice for them, I should actually review the policy, look at it, see what they are offering. You know, and then, you know, you can, you know, I can say, hey, yeah, we're really not interested. We're gonna stay with our curtain, current, um, vendor. Uh, but I think in all fairness, you actually have to look, I'll look at the policy and read it.
I'm, I'm gonna make a consensus of the board. I.
Can I just say that she, when she called me, I had no idea that there was anything at the transfer station existing. So, I thought she was coming brand-new and approaching the town. And I know for a fact, I don't think any of the neighbors would like to see one of these in the town comment. So, it didn't make sense.
Oh, that's what she was talking about?
And then I, and then I said, then she said, how about the library? And so, she has already contacted the library. And the, and I said, have you checked with the school? So, this is one person approaching me, and I'm bringing her, uh, email as a courtesy to discuss it, but.
I think one at the school actually made good sense for the stuff that, you know, even kids have an extra. So, I think the school and the transfer station are great ideas, but I'm no real.
I, I, I can make the recommendation that we take it away from the board, give it back to the transfer station manager, let him decide and make the appropriate decision. He's gonna live with that box. If he finds the current one satisfactory, he gets to keep it. If not, he can do whatever he wants with the second company. So, I'm gonna leave it with you.
Okay.
Because I don't think. Would you say, would you agree that there's no other building that we should, I should be considering?
Other than the school and the transfer station, I don't think many.
Yeah, I think that's it.
So, the highway department gets no traffic pretty much, and we don't want it in a town.
Well, I even asked Dan. I said, can you guys put one on your, in your parking area? And he said, no, there's no room to park it in.
No place to push, no. No place to push, no. It's, no. So, it's your choice.
Yeah, but I will go for when we read it just.
Do you want that copy? Because I.
She emailed me.
Okay, okay.
I, I looked at it, it sounds good, but the thing is, then I said, where does my wife do with all those clothes? And she, she, she sneaks over and doubles the stuff off, doesn't want me to see what she's thrown away.
I might throw my clothes away too.
I said, I was looking, where's my favorite pair of pants, gone.
Okay.
Alright, um, transfer screen, be closed in, alright, I covered all my stuff for the transfer station. Gentlemen, do you have anything else for the transfer station, we need to talk?
I have one thing.
Person wise, okay, hold on, I, I had a quick one before you.
Yeah.
Personnel staffing, how we doing?
I would just say, this has been the hardest training I've ever had to do.
Okay.
It's been rough, and we're still in the training mode.
I find the gentleman at the front, the older gentleman at the, uh, at the, on the front counter.
Oh, yeah?
Outstanding.
Yes, he's.
Very loyal.
Very, he's a good, he's a pleasure to work with.
Yes, and a pleasure to deal with.
Is that the new one he's talking about?
No.
Oh, Dave?
Dave.
Okay.
Dave is a pleasure to work with, he's a, uh, he greets the public nicely, has a sense of humor.
He does.
And, uh, and the other gentleman, you have working at the contractor, the new one you just hired?
Yes.
Uh, I find him pleasant to work with.
Yes, we just have a few things to, we're still hashing out, right, still in the training mode.
Oh, he's trained. Sure.
Been frustrating for him, it's been frustrating for me, but I think, um, we've had some other issues which I talked with me about, I don't know if I mentioned with you about, with another employee, um, and some.
Well, the thing is, but we're, i- if you can work between you and Lean, fantastic, we should keep it that way.
We've got it now, so they're kind of on the same page, and I actually have a couple other guys that didn't really wanna work with each other, they're working with each other.
For you.
So to try and.
Think and make these work.
Trying.
Okay, I'll leave it at that, now Lean, you have one more thing?
I, you, I know you're really busy and very, any, have you started looking for the new truck, or?
I've spoken with the salesman a couple times, we're just trying to get hooked up to go down and talk with him some more.
Okay.
I talked to him, emailed a couple times, um, I'm working on the cover system, I'm working on the fee schedule, and I'm working on getting the truck painted.
Okay, so keep in mind with the, with the work for the truck, for the painting and the cover system, we need a contract in place, and then, there's no pressure.
Yep. Yes. Right.
For the warrant expiring, but on the vehicle, on the other hand, same thing, you either have to have a, a work order or a purchase order in order to hold that, those fundings until the, the truck comes in, whatever it is.
Do you wanna use full film again on the new truck?
It won't be full film.
You wanna try some different?
Oil, regular oil.
You don't want some film?
The hot oil that I had done on my pickup. Uh, the other thing, I'm talking about that, I filed a grant paperwork for, towards the cover system.
Yep.
I filed that, I don't know, first of May, should know, end of May, first of June, they're meeting in the next couple weeks, so we'll know how mu, if we get it, and how much we get.
And you are looking at a cloud package, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, what else?
I think what, I think we, I think we hit a, a variety of topics, I think we hit a lot of them tonight.
Other than not speaking. Busy right now.
Yeah. Bob, do you have anything?
I think, oh.
Dave, anything else?
Markets, real quick, um, markets, anybody that follows the journals and stuff, markets are tanking again.
Yeah, it's been. Uh, what are we not?
Right now, knock on wood, um.
Glasses are one of the things that we can't.
The glass, yeah, that irritated me to no end, cause it doesn't really affect us. Uh, that was for your single screen material.
Okay.
Our glass, we ship, we pay for it, it's dirty dolls a ton, plus, you know, whatever cost the town to truck it, it's used as a road aggregate.
Okay.
It's goes to the town in London, that's the closest site right now, the other sites in King, they're actually looking at trying to set up another site, maybe more central, uh, but that's it for now. Um, they crush it, use it as a road aggregate, if the town had a project that they wanted to use it on, you know, the glass, mix it with their crushed gravel or round culverts, that's one of the big things they use it for, cause the water can't penetrate it like it can the gravel, actually, it pushes it away. Uh, then we can actually, a load for a load, we can go up, drop a load of uncushed and get a load of crushed and bring back. Paper cardboard markets are doing this right now, paper is on an all time low right now, some communities are actually having to pay for paper. We're shipping a load Tuesday, and we're gonna get paid for our paper, it's not a lot, but we're on the positive side and not the negative side.
Well, it keeps it out of the main, out of the, uh.
Wait, and what will happen, uh, in my opinion, is if it gets to the point where we have to pay for it, and it's, cause some towns are paying sixty, seventy dollars a ton to get rid of their paper, they're using a different vendor than we are, um, they're sending it, you know, their trash number, whatever, they're just gonna start sending it for trash, cause it doesn't make any sense to pay, um, their guys to do all this work to it, and then pay that to get rid of it, when they could just have everybody throw it right in the trash and eliminate that labor cost. We're not at that part, we're getting paid for it, so, as long as we're getting paid, even if we get zero, we're still coming.
Keeps it out, it comes out of them.
So that's where we are with that.
Okay, great. Uh, metals?
Metals are good, metals are holding like one sixty-five a ton delivered.
Do you still separate copper and aluminum?
Yeah, we separate some of that, we're not doing as much, um, we are separating out the two aluminums, they're paying pretty good money, but what we've tried, um, I have, I have another dumpster that's going up on the option block, and then I kept one, and I have one other one that we had used at the highway for a little bit. Instead of hauling the aluminums or the pecker, and you haul a hundred pounds here, a hundred pounds there, we threw it in that dumpster.
And put it aside, so you get a mass load?
Yeah, we're hauling, I think the last load was twenty-two, twenty-three hundred pounds, so we were paying thirty, forty cents a pound.
John, you had a comment about this?
Well, I was just, uh, I put a bunch of clothes in the bin there.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm a good sized guy, and I thought they were going for people that needed clothes, and Woody tells me that they grind that up for insulation and stuff like that, so it's not really.
That was me, or one of the guys, that stuff, that stuff gets bailed and shipped out. I don't know if I'm doing it for insulation.
No, the, we're talking about the clothes in the yellow bin, the guy was picking up today.
No, yeah, that guy bails it up, they bail it and ship it, it goes in overseas containers, it goes all over the place.
It doesn't go into helping people like, uh?
No, that's, it's, it's the same thing, as we're saying.
Yeah, they bail it, they bail the material out, they don't ship it loose like it is, like when we get it to bags, they, they bail the material and ship it out.
Like overseas or?
Yeah, it goes everywhere, it goes all over the place, I mean, I could get the actual particulars of where it goes if you want.
Maybe when you check into the new one and that one, see where the stuff goes, cause it would be nice if it was helping local people.
No, it's, it's, well, if you wanna, local people, the thing is, if you get something nice, I'd say, give it to Goodwill or Salvation Army, and you get it to.
I actually thought that's what those were.
See, that's, that's what I thought when I put it in there, otherwise I would have taken it and went to the Salvation.
Thing is, this, the second company has put in a bid on it, uh, and put, requested permission, basically says that they send it overseas, it's an overseas charity.
Oh, really?
Yeah, a lot of it does that, a lot of, and then you probably find a lot of it comes back.
I mean, I can, I can obviously follow owner and talk, but find out particulars, but.
Designer rip jeans.
No, but, uh, if you want to donate, lovely, the Salvation Army and the Goodwill, they'll take donations.
We do now, that, when I found that out, while we do go to Salvation. I have, so does the epilepsy foundation.
We do, moving on, I have one more question for the board.
Okay.
Um, in light of this forty-three hour work week, and whether to pay overtime on forty-three hours or regular time, um, I think there's been some discussion here tonight that cleared up a few issues, I can see where Lean approved the hours, cause that's his normal work day is ten hours normal on a normal week. I could see where the rest of the manual policy shows eight hours for like holiday pay, and Woody's agreed to that, and you're in agreement, everybody's agreeing with that, where bereavement's not on there, it's kind of a gray area, till we clean that up. It sounded like Woody was okay in not getting overtime for those additional three hours, but regular time. Are you guys okay with just paying regular time for the three hours and getting this off our table?
That's what's in our policy, right, yes.
And he was okay with that. So three hours of regular time, are you good with that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna get into a big match over three hours of time.
That's what I'm talking about, cause it's in front of us tonight.
No, every time you talk to your lawyer, it costs you.
It's not there, everybody else has all done this policy.
It costs more than three hours.
He picked those hours, that shift.
But he's a department that also controls those hours.
But things, those three hours, he wouldn't have been gone over if he wasn't called in, correct?
Right, cause what I did is.
So he was called in.
The three days I knew I was gonna be out.
Right.
I worked, that first day, that Tuesday, I did seven and a half hours, I think it was, and I told Lean that I saved time on Friday, cause I know I was gonna have some time in between everything, on Friday to come in and pull that box, we didn't have to worry about trying to get someone else in there to do it, um, and all that happy stuff, went and did the box, so everything was set for Saturday, everything was good. Um, I didn't know that a verb was gonna go in the building and get trapped in there.
And in the future, we're gonna clean up that part of that policy, this summer when we do those reviews, so from this point on, you know, you know, we'll, we'll get the eight hour.
Woody qualifies for the three hours pay, even if you deduct the twenty-four hours.
That's what I'm talking about.
So it's not an issue, it's, the state law is hours work, you collect time and hour. So when you get, since we get a holiday, we get a holiday, and you end up working three hours somewhere else.
Right.
Unfortunately, the holidays are all.
No, no, yeah.
It's on hours.
I, I think we have, I think we have.
Yeah, Lean sent me that, like I said, my head was in a different spot, I wasn't thinking, when I wrote that down, I just, it's habit, I wrote it down, boom, done.
I don't wanna make somebody spend undue money on attorney's fees when we can solve this here tonight.
Can you tell me what day you went in to do that call?
It's Friday.
It's on, it's on the time sheet, it's on your time sheet.
It was on Friday, great, it just, I put it as overtime, I, like I said, I wasn't thinking, I just, I had enough going on, I wrote it down.
So I don't get consensus from the board to pay him for those three hours at regular time.
No, it should be, it, it should be three hours regular time, I.
You're not agreeing with that, Woody?
Right, and that's what I thought right along, I mean, once, once Lean sent me the document that showed, and, oh yeah, light came on, it says holidays, it's time work, I, I get that part.
And we'll clean up the bereavement part this summer in that policy, so then that will be just like a holiday from this.
Yeah, I think Lean took the smarter way of paying you ten, that was, that was, I mean, that was the only way, that was the right way of doing it at the time, and so you did nothing wrong with doing that.
Okay, so you're saying pay him three hours?
Regular time.
Right, let's straight time.
Yeah, cause unfortunately, the Department of Labor has people that are public employees treated different than everybody else. So they get a lesser than they do, you know, if you were in a private sector.
Right, and like I said, once she sent me that document, it's like, oh yeah, now, you're right, it does say hours work, and I'm fine with that, because it does say hours work, I'm fine with that, you know, that's an honest mistake on my part, and I'm cool with that.
Okay, settle then, alright. Last, last time, last time, Lean, do you have anything for the group?
Uh, only that the warrant's been processed, and you'll be getting your bill by the end of, uh, May, first of June.
Before you realize it, four taxes.
Um, if you wanted to go over that estimated worksheet that I have here.
Yes.
As you know, I'm a stickler of, uh.
Thank you, Woody.
Thank you.
Trying to understand where the, the tax rate's gonna go up and go down, the system that I developed on this, um, estimated tax rate seems to work really well. And I've modified the new assessment to reflect the just under seven million new, um, property values, so are currently not.
You're on the red bull writing?
Yeah.
That's a three, ten, seven, six, seven?
This current, last year, we were at three hundred and three million, we're now at three hundred and ten million, seven sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Um, but that's based on residential value, I can't say for sure what will happen when we get our utility values end, end of September, but based on this information, calculating the warrants is a, an impact, it dropped it a couple of cents, so it's eighty-two cents for the warrants that were passed, and then if you look at the operating budget, which is in the gray, broken down, uh, further down, I carried that up to the yellow, add it to the warrant total, and we're looking at a, a town impact of four dollars and forty-eight cents, which last year came in at four dollars and sixty-three cents, so that's a decrease of fifteen cents over last year's tax rate for the town's portion of the tax rate. And then what I also did is to look at the second sheet.
For the first half of the year.
For the first half, no, actually, that, that will be what we set our tax rate at, if we give no money back to the utilities, or no value back to utilities.
That's why I was getting at the first half of the year, right, cause after September, it might change that.
The first half is always an estimate, you take a lot, the prior year divided by two, and that's what your tax bill is, so if you had to escrow your own taxes, you would do, base it that way.
So this is what it is right now until we get to utilities?
Correct, and if there are no changes with utilities, that's what the town's portion will be looking at when we set our tax rate in October. But if you look at the second page, this is the form that Jeff Trexel presented at the, uh, school meeting, and he, if, I highlighted the proposed next year fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget, and I went down to the column that says total local school taxes to be raised, which I understand is the number that after his revenues, his grants, and everything else is what the, uh, we will have to raise from taxes. So basing that, using that number, and I'll confirm it with, uh, the S A U, uh, using the same formula that I used to calculate the towns, um, that five million, one twenty-one, five forty-three will be sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents, using the two thousand and eighteen property values. And then they also passed the warrant of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for deposit to the capital reserve, so that is a seventy-seven cent, whereas originally it was seventy-nine cents, so with the new values, it came down a couple cents, so the total local school tax rate, I calculate to be at seventeen twenty-five, and if you look at last year's tax rate for the local school, it was fifteen fifty-nine, and that did include the warrants, that fifteen fifty-nine, so the increase over two thousand and seventeen is at a dollar sixty-six.
And that's, that sounds like, that's operational, because if.
That's, that's the warrants and the operation.
Right, but if you recall, last year, they did drop the warrant for the, uh, capital improvements fund.
No, they didn't, we collected, last year that.
Yeah, just, that's another topic, it's two twenty and two forty, right.
Yeah, last year, they're.
But Lean, how did, how did you not come to the sixteen eighty-six he has here?
How did I not come to the sixteen?
Yeah, you're, you were off just a little bit, right, six five.
Well, I, well, he mentioned at this meeting that there was an adjustment of revenues.
Okay.
So without, with using his numbers here, he's actually saying the operating budget is a dollar twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, uh, a dollar thirty-seven, I think he said.
Dollar twenty-seven difference, see, it's in that next column over.
Dollar twenty-four originally. So I'm gonna confirm my numbers with, uh, the S A U, so basically, we're looking at a dollar sixty-six if we do nothing with that money that they found, that excess money, so I also included just a little adjusted decrease.
Dollar sixty-six more.
Right, we're looking at a dollar sixty-six increase with the warrant and the operating budget.
On the school side?
On the school side, if we do nothing with the million dollars that they just have to return, or they haven't decided what they're gonna do with it. So there'll be a dollar sixty-six, and I asked him last week, if he, if he mentioned the three dollars and fifty cents decrease.
It'd be minus one sixty-six.
It's actually, the, the increase is a dollar sixty-six, so it's not a true decrease of a three dollars and fifty cents, it's a, an adjusted decrease of one eighty-four.
And on his form here, I see a dollar thirty-six, so see what I see on that?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that's where he was saying was a dollar thirty-seven, but that, again, if you look at the very top section, the, it says capital reserve fund, he has a zero there, and that's not a true reflection of what we have to collect for taxes. It's not different from the prior year, but there is a seventy-seven cent increase to the taxes because of that warrant. So what he shows in his spreadsheet is a difference from prior year, so you can see the budget has increased three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, he's saying there's no change on the two, two hundred and forty thousand dollar warrant, but we still have to raise it, it's a different year, so there's a seventy-seven cent increase there. It was seventy-nine, based on the old property values, but now it's seventy-seven, so you take his true one thirty-six, you still have to add the seventy-seven, so based on the new va, property values, it's, it's decreased it a little bit, but we do have an increase of a dollar sixty-six. And then depending on what they do with that money that they talked about last week, we could see an adjusted decrease of one eighty-four, we could see just an increase of a dollar sixty-six if they use the entire funding towards that, what they're proposing with the bond payments, if they're allowed to do that. So there will be, um, a definite decrease on the town side. And depending on what they do with that money.
What I was saying, Lean, is that, um, one, the difference is, the operating budget went up three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Correct, and then we raised, we had to, we have to raise and appropriate two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a new capital reserve deposit.
For next year.
For this year.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and it could be transferred with the voters at the next school board meeting.
Correct, and so this is really not a, a valid report, I, I tried to explain it to him that, yes, I understand it's the same as the prior year, but there's still a tax dollar impact. You still have to raise the money, that two hundred and forty from prior year is a completely separate warrant. So I'll confirm my numbers with, with, um.
But the thing is, it's a separate warrant, but if you just, forget the two forty, their operating, they still went up, just an operating budget of three seventy-eight.
And that's why you're seeing the sixteen forty-eight, which is an increase over, but see, this fifteen fifty-nine included that two hundred and forty
Right, right.
Thousand dollar warrant.
In other words, um, it's a zero sum game when it comes to two hundred and forty, cause they had two forty last year, we have two forty this year.
Correct, but we.
What, what they, what they, what's in the budget is, uh, an operating budget increase of
Four hundred.
Of almost, well, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
Which is a huge amount of money, and what I'm.
Well, here's the difference, Mike. There's a difference.
Right, oh, absolutely. And the thing is, that one sixty-six, or one thirty-six.
It's huge if you were looking at our budget, we're negative five million dollars.
All right. Still, it's still, it's still huge.
So his numbers are a little bit different from mine, but I, I can tell you that from what I.
So you're gonna meet with, uh, with, with the D R, I mean, school board? Not school board, I'm talking about the S A U.
Duane Ford. I'll, I'll, because he and I are on the same page as far as how you report
Yes, okay.
Your tax impact. And Jeff was saying, he thought that he could, on that article they just passed this year, that he could say to the taxpayers, this three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars
Observe it there.
is a twenty-six cent, you know, uh, you know, a dollar impact to your taxes. That's not how it, it, the RSA reads. You have to use the total budget and then determine that tax rate impact, so.
Are you gonna, so you like the idea of meeting with them?
I absolutely do, yeah.
I made a recommendation over that Lean meet with the, with the.
I don't need your recommendations. I'm going to meet with them.
Well, make sure it's quiet time where you can talk without interruptions.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, Bob, it's, anything else, Lean, to you?
Just one more thing. Bob and I are working with the welfare, uh, applications. We received the three total. Bob's looked at the two that we received early in the week. We received one today, so he'll review that. I've got one scheduled for next Monday, one for next Thursday, and I'll try to get the second one for Monday as well.
If Thursday, were you part of a conference?
Can you say whichever one you want to do?
So next Thursday, we might be able to come for a decision.
Bob and I can come up with a, a recommendation.
Hopefully we, uh, cuz even a meeting with that one, if we meet with her on Thursday, it might be a little, I mean.
Right.
You might have to give it some thought cuz they're all well qualified.
Yeah, yeah, they definitely have the backgrounds.
So, different, different areas, very, uh, very well educated. Uh, you know, whichever one would take, uh, the course, I think would do really well as to what direction to send people in.
Yep.
So, it, you know.
What, just two weeks, huh?
Yeah, I, I would, I would do it the following way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not under pressure cuz we're gonna be with them on Thursday.